We've been talking to Elizabeth Scala, professor of English at the University of Texas at Austin, the one with a Taylor Swift class. Thanks so much for joining us.
Thank you.
You're listening to Here and Now. Next time on The World, maybe you grew up with breakdancing in the 80s, but this generation has elevated breaking to a competitive sport.
We got so much recognition and finally our art is noticed. That's a really good thing.
Breakdancers and their art setting sights on the Olympics. Next time on The World.
You can hear The World Monday through Thursday at 3 on Radio IQ. Special event support is made possible in part by Capriotti Sandwich Shop and McAllister's Deli and Catering. Thank you for your support.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston, where the program is produced, and your NPR station. From MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy. Clients are matched with one of 25,000 therapists and can communicate via video, chat, or phone at betterhelp.com-public. It's Here and Now. Spain's national women's soccer team members say they are ready to focus on soccer after a summer rocked by scandal. Their win at the Women's World Cup was overshadowed almost immediately when Spain's Football Federation president gave a player an unwanted kiss. He has since resigned. And players ended a month-long boycott after the Football Federation agreed to implement, quote, "immediate and profound changes." Other women's soccer clubs around the world are now taking notice and trying to implement changes of their own. WLRN's Tim Paget tells us about a case in Haiti.
The Haitian women's soccer team made its first-ever appearance in a World Cup this summer. Fox Sports commentators were impressed by Haiti's play against powerhouse teams like England, but Haiti was knocked out of the tournament in the first round. Still, the Haitian women did score a victory this summer, not on the field in Australia, but in a courtroom in Haiti.
This is very important, not only for Haiti, but for all other countries.
Rosie August Dusena is a lawyer with the nonprofit National Human Rights Defense Network in Port-au-Prince. It's one of five Haitian rights groups that recently convinced an appeals judge in Haiti to order Yves Jean Bart to appear in court there in October. Jean Bart is the former longtime president of Haiti's National Soccer Federation. He's accused by several Haitian women players of sexual harassment and rape. Dusena says Jean Bart was protected by the fact that soccer is Haiti's most popular sport.
He was at the head of the federation. He was very powerful, very famous. He used to have a lot of money, but Haitian society needs to know what happened.
That's Jean Bart at a press conference in Port-au-Prince this past spring, denying the charges against him. At that time, he thought he had escaped those accusations. When they were first brought against him in 2020, a Haitian judge, without hearing from the women's lawyers, dismissed the case. Soccer's international governing body, known as FIFA, did take the charges seriously and banned Jean Bart for life. But this February, a FIFA arbitration court overturned the ban.
Now the judge has more information than before and decides to keep upping the case.
Haitian human rights attorney Patrice Florvilleuse is part of the legal team that, after the FIFA setback, presented additional evidence and testimony against Jean Bart to a Haitian appeals judge. As a result, Jean Bart's legal troubles are not over after all. Florvilleuse spoke to me from Port-au-Prince. He says because soccer, or football as it's known outside the U.S., is so high-profile in Haiti, the Jean Bart case is a chance to ramp up the fight against all sexual abuse in the country.
We need to have example of our justice in Haiti. It will be a big message from the system against impunity and corruption.
None of the Haitian women's soccer players who've accused Jean Bart are speaking out publicly. That's largely because, when they first came forward three years ago, they say they received death threats. Jean Bart denies having any part in that. But women's soccer advocates say Haiti's controversy is just a reflection of a generalized culture of misbehavior, sexual and otherwise, everywhere in the sport. Cassie Gray is founder and CEO of the nonprofit Female Footballers in San Jose, California.
There's just always been in the soccer world a lack of professionalism. You go to any other job, like in the corporate world, for example, what's going on in Spain? Today, that would never fly.
Gray is referring to this summer scandal in Spain, where prosecutors are investigating the former Soccer Federation president, Luis Rubiales. He kissed a Spanish player on the mouth without her consent after the team won the World Cup. Gray says FIFA needs to mandate stronger sexual misconduct monitoring mechanisms at every national federation, including U.S. Soccer, whose problems were detailed last year in an independent report by former U.S. Deputy Attorney General Sally Yates.
FIFA in general does not have a great reputation amongst the women's side of our game. Oh, God, it's such a boys' club. It's that feeling, and so you don't feel supported, which makes you not want to report abuse.
Rosie August Dusena in Haiti says she and the other human rights lawyers pushing for Jean Bart's prosecution are also calling on child and female protection organizations there to be officially embedded in the Soccer Federation.
So that girls can at any time complain. This is an opportunity for Haitian soccer women and girls to have confidence back.
Both off the field and on it. For Here and Now, I'm Tim Paget in Miami.
And today on our podcast, Here and Now Anytime, underground writers and filmmakers in China are documenting their country's history at great risk, as their work often clashes with the founding myths of the ruling Communist Party.
They see this as, in a way, a time capsule that they're sending off to future Chinese people to let them know that today, inside China, there are people who are trying to document Chinese history. And many of them see it as almost like their patriotic duty, this kind of calling that they have.
Pulitzer Prize winner Ian Johnson discusses his new book Sparks: China's Underground Historians and Their Battle for the Future. You can find our podcast, Here and Now Anytime, wherever you listen. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC.
I'd like to invite all who are willing to stand for a moment of silence or personal prayer, and immediately following, we'll pledge the allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for September 26, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokecountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. Item A, opening ceremonies, is the roll call. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here. Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Is there anyone who needs to make any postponements, add to, or change, fellow board members?
None.
Mr. Kaywood.
Madam Chair, I have two additions. First, staff would like to add new business item D3, resolution approving the execution of a performance agreement between the county of Roanoke, the Roanoke County Economic Development Authority, and Wells Fargo Bank to provide Wells Fargo Bank an economic development incentive grant for its business expansion activities in Roanoke County. And then the second addition I'd like to recommend is on our closed meeting, item M, to add Cave Spring Magisterial District to the locations listed.
Are there any objections to those changes?
No.
Mr. Lubek?
I have no changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Item C, proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards. Item C1 is presentation of Virginia Association of Counties Achievement Award. Richard L. Kaywood, County Administrator; James Hutser, Government Relations Associate, Virginia Association of Counties.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm going to be up here very briefly just to introduce James Hutser from VACO. He's going to talk a little bit about VACO, the VACO Achievement Award, and then the sheriff and some guests we have from Roanoke College are going to come and join and talk a little bit about the topic of the award.
Hello.
Hello.
Oh, my gosh, I got two of these. All right. Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. Like Mr. Kaywood said, I'm James Hutser with VACO. I would like to say before I go into this, it's absolute pleasure to be here in Roanoke because it's my first time. Roanoke County leadership, Roanoke County staff is very involved with the Virginia Association of Counties, and I hear we're getting another one. And it is just a real treat to be here and an honor to work with you guys and see you. So it is my distinct privilege to present the VACO Achievement Award. For the benefit of your constituents, who may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties, VACO has existed since 1934, and we serve and support your efforts as county officials. We support counties in many ways. First is through our advocacy efforts in the state legislature and the federal level. We also serve counties through educational programs, member services, and communications efforts. 2003, we established the Achievement Award Program to recognize counties that adopted innovative approaches to providing public service and identifying programs that could serve as models for other counties to emulate. I am proud to present this fun Achievement Award to Roanoke County. We just got these new ones. They look much better than the old just wooden plaques we had.
For folks in the back.
They're very nice. So this is our 21st annual Achievement Awards Program. We received 153 entries this year, and 33 winners were selected from 20 counties. As you could tell, this is very competitive, less than 25% of entries won. Roanoke has won the award 18 times, and Roanoke County ranks sixth all time. I can tell there are people to my right, and I will let them come up and explain the Inside Out program, which is the program we're here recognizing.
Thank you, Mr. Rattner.
Thank you very much.
Sheriff Orange.
Absolutely. Thank you all so much for having us here today. Thank you to VACO for this great honor. I'm just going to speak briefly. So back in 2018, well, actually, our partnership with Roanoke College has extended for a long time. We have an opportunity to have a great criminal justice program and other programs there, but criminal justice, namely, has been involved with our office for about the last eight years. They come and do tours of our facility. We've had the opportunity to speak in a number of classes and so forth. So back in 2018, the opportunity presented itself through Dr. Daisy Ball to partner on the Inside Out program. So we thought it was a phenomenal program. We were really excited about the opportunity, so we immediately jumped on board and had our first class shortly thereafter. The program has evolved since then. It's grown and expanded to include other curriculum, and that's why I have Dr. Trexler here with me today. So Dr. Trexler is going to give you guys a little background on the program and how it's expanded over the years to where we are today and what led us to essentially receiving this award. So Dr. Trexler.
The Inside Out program started in 1996 at Temple University. It has now expanded. We're in its 25th year. It's an international program, even extending all the way into Australia. The idea behind the program is faculty members are trained, and we take traditional college students who live on a traditional college campus inside of a facility that houses inside students, and we do a class. So we're there for about three hours a week, and we do different topics. So the course that we just won the award for was on peacebuilding and world religions. My colleague Daisy Ball teaches courses in criminology. We've trained other faculty at the college who are offering courses on everything from juvenile delinquency to we have an instructor in training right now to do some work on Holocaust studies. So we're just really honored to get to be part of this program with the sheriff and with Roanoke County. So thank you all so much for letting us be here and be part of this process with you.
We appreciate what you're doing. This is outstanding work. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Do any of my board members want to say anything at this point? If not, we'll go straight to the... Peter, do you want to say something, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I think I attended a graduation or recognizing the folks that attended the class a while back, and it was pretty impressive. That was before, just before COVID, I believe.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So how many students do you have involved usually?
We average 10 students per class inside and 10 students outside, so it's a total of 20 students in each class. Just because.
That's great. Good work.
Very good. Let's take some pictures. Did you want to say something?
I'm just saying congratulations.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Great outreach.
Item D, resolution supporting an application for up to 1,400,000 of matched transportation funding through the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT Fiscal Year 2027 and 2028 Revenue Sharing Program. Catawba Magisterial District, Megan G. Cronice, Assistant Director of Planning. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. The VDOT Revenue Sharing Program provides Roanoke County the opportunity to receive 50% state matching funds for construction and improvements to primary and secondary roads in the state's highway system. The Revenue Sharing Program funding is distributed on a biennial basis. Due to significant state budget constraints related to COVID-19, the Revenue Sharing Program funding allocation was restructured in 2020 to push new allocations into out years. As a result, Revenue Sharing projects submitted this year are anticipated to receive funding in fiscal years 2027 and 2028. Dry Hollow Road is located off West River Road and is the only access to Camp Roanoke and to approximately 60 households. Spring Hollow Reservoir can also be accessed from Dry Hollow Road. Approximately 0.1 mile from the intersection with West River Road, Dry Hollow Road narrows to one lane to cross under two Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks. Dry Hollow Creek also shares space with roadway under the historic railroad bridge. The original project goals were to widen the roadway to two lanes and to improve site distance under the railroad bridge. VDOT is administering all phases of the Dry Hollow Road Safety Improvement Project. The project was added to the VDOT six-year plan in 1998, and the project was then removed from the VDOT six-year plan due to funding cuts and restructuring during the recession in 2009. County staff investigated safety alternatives with VDOT in 2013, and in 2014, Roanoke County applied for and received Revenue Sharing funding for fiscal years 2016 and 2017 to restart the project. The project was added to the secondary six-year plan in 2017 to fund the estimated deficit. Sufficient project funding accrued in 2019 for VDOT to begin preliminary engineering. A Revenue Sharing application was submitted in 2021, and a community meeting was held to communicate the proposed VDOT plan to reinforce the roadway against the creek and to widen the roadway to two lanes. Additional Revenue Sharing funding was awarded in 2022 for fiscal years 2023 and 2024. This year, VDOT proposed a new plan to minimize impacts to the historic Norfolk Southern Railroad Bridge by slightly widening the roadway and signalizing both directions of traffic. The new plan requires additional funding. VDOT anticipates that a community meeting could take place in early 2024 when more details are known about the project's schedule and anticipated construction impacts. The resolution authorizes the application for up to 1.4 million in matching Revenue Sharing Funds for Dry Hollow Road Safety Improvements. If this application for funding is approved by the Commonwealth Transportation Board, Roanoke County appropriation of funding will be considered in fiscal years 26, 27, 28, and 29 in capital improvement program cycles. The staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution supporting an application for up to 1.4 million of matched transportation funding through the VDOT Fiscal Year 27 and Fiscal Year 28 Revenue Sharing Program. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions of the board? This is in the Catawba District. Dry Hollow Road has been an interesting roadway for quite a while. Did you see any information about the age of the road? I mean, this has been going on probably for 100 years at least. I'm sure it was probably originally a cow path or something.
It's probably a very old dirt road. That, I mean, there's homes on it that date to, I believe, the 1920s. So, you know, it's an old neighborhood road that ran under the railroad tracks against the creek, and that pinch point has become more of an issue, and more development has been built up the roadway where there's only one way in and one way out.
For those of you who have not traveled this, it is essentially a dangerous blind curve going under a railroad trestle, and so this is very needed. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adopt this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item D2, resolution requesting the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization fund three projects for the Fiscal Year 2025 through 2030 Surface Transportation Block Grant and Carbon Reduction Programs. Ms. Cronice, again.
Thank you very much. Surface Transportation Block Grant applications are accepted on odd-numbered years. Earlier this year, Carbon Reduction Program became available to the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization, which is following the same STBG application process. Applications for both programs are due on September 29. The Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization reviews both applications and recommends funding allocations to the Commonwealth Transportation Board. The proposed applications will request leverage funding for smart-scale Round Six applications due in August 2024. These include Route 419 electric roads, safety, and streetscape improvements from Grandin Road Extension to Kegy Road. This project includes changing the Grandin Road Extension intersection to a restricted crossing U-turn configuration, extending sidewalk along the west side of Route 419 from Oak Grove Plaza to Kegy Village, extending sidewalk on the east or Roanoke City side of Route 419 from Starbucks to the new pedestrian crosswalks and signals at the Kegy Road intersection, and modifying drainage along the roadway. These proposed improvements were identified through a VDOT project pipeline study completed in 2022. The second project is Route 11460 West Main Street at Dow Hollow Road Intersection Safety Improvements. The goal of the project is to improve safety at the intersection and reduce Interstate 81 detour impacts to the road network. A VDOT project pipeline study is currently underway for this intersection. And the third project is the Peters Creek Road at Williamson Road Intersection Improvements. These intersection improvements are needed to reduce congestion, improve safety, and mitigate Interstate 81 detour impacts. This intersection is part of a much larger VDOT project pipeline study currently underway between Peters Creek Road at Woodhaven Road and Williamson Road at Plantation Road. There is no fiscal impact as Surface Transportation Block Grant and Carbon Reduction Program funds are state and federal. There are no local match funds required. Staff recommendation is that the Board of Supervisors adopt a resolution requesting the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization provide Surface Transportation Block Grant and/or Carbon Reduction Program funding for three projects for fiscal year 2025 through 2030. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions, staff? Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
Ms. Cronice, I understand that we would hope that these would be state and federal projects, and it's early. I understand that. Do you have an estimate as to what cost for each of these projects would be? Is there a range of a price tag for each of these?
So we applied for the 419 streetscape improvements in the Oak Grove area in smart-scale Round Five and were unsuccessful. At that time, the project was about $13 million. I expected that the project will be more expensive for smart-scale Round Six, so we were trying to offset those costs and make the project more competitive with this STBG funding. Part of the problem is that there are also changes coming to the smart-scale program that are going to make it more difficult for us to be successful with our grant applications, so we're doing everything we can to try to make them as competitive as possible. The other two projects are very much in development, so we know that these intersections have issues, and they're very identifiable from a regional perspective as places with challenges. We had a recent fatality at the Dow Hollow Road and Route 460, 11460 intersection recently, so there's a lot of attention there. So we would like to ask for leverage between perhaps $2 and $5 million apiece. A range would help to offset those costs, but we expect those projects will be at least $10 million apiece.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, Mr. North?
Just a point of order. This resolution today, being considered by the board, will also be added to the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization's docket this Thursday. Is that correct?
Well, this resolution is to support the Surface Transportation Block Grant and CRP programs, which will be submitted with the applications due on Friday.
Right, which is keeping with the theme of using other people's money.
Yes.
Besides Roanoke County's, and so I would support this.
Yes, Mr. Radford?
Yeah, thank you. Megan, back to the Kegy Road intersection. I know at the other end, Carriage Hill, we've got those handicap accesses across for pedestrian. Is any of that on the city side? Do they participate in that, or is that entire corridor going to be part of VDOT and smart-scale as we march sort of south with more sidewalks and streetscape?
So, as you know, the Oak Grove Center Plan was adopted by both the Board of Supervisors and Roanoke City Council.
Right.
So VDOT has Route 419 in that location.
Right.
So the city of Roanoke starts at the edge of the VDOT right-of-way. So the improvements that are proposed with this project are primarily in the county, but we also talked with the city about extending the sidewalk that they have at Starbucks, which is actually six feet wide, which is quite wide.
Right.
Up to the Kegy Road intersection. So both of the pedestrian improvements that were constructed over the summer, the Kegy-Kegy intersection at Kegy Village was through Highway Safety Improvement Program funding that VDOT implemented, and then the other project... And then the other project was the Carriage Lane/Grandin Road intersection, and that was Surface Transportation Block Grant funding that we obtained several years ago, and that was also a VDOT-administered project. So, we definitely collaborate with the city on those projects, but we've been taking the lead on submission.
Right, so when's the next deadline for the sidewalks over in Carriage Hill going left, you know, east and west on the county side and city side? Is there any day or any forecast?
So, in smart-scale Round Five, the sister project to the one we talked about today was awarded funding. That was a $6 million project. So, that project will construct sidewalk from Glenn Heather Drive on the county side to the Carriage intersection to connect up with the new pedestrian signals, and then it will continue across the front edge of Oak Grove Plaza up to the Grandin Road Extension intersection. So, what we're applying for is kind of Phase Two of those improvements. We applied for both phases in smart-scale Round Five but only got one. We got the cheaper one.
Okay.
The more expensive one, we're trying to go after and trying to buy down the cost of that project with the STBG leverage. So, that project was just awarded and funding while it was programmed as of July 1st of this year, so VDOT doesn't have a schedule for a set detailed schedule for when that project will be constructed because we haven't started design yet, but I anticipate within the next, you know, five to six years is typically when construction would start.
Right, okay. I'll only ask this because we have residents in my community that are asking about that intersection, and they call it the sidewalk to nowhere, so thank you.
And we've heard that too, and in our Rome Ro Co video from a couple months ago.
I saw it.
We talk about, this is just the first step in a lot of improvements coming to the Oak Grove area to implement the Oak Grove Center Plan. So, we've got to start somewhere. We started with these pedestrian improvements, and there's more sidewalks to come that are funded, and we're trying to extend that network with this next application that we hope will be successful in smart-scale Round Six.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you follow up?
One more question. Project Three that you list here in the agenda is Peters Creek and Williamson Road.
Yes, sir.
Which is being studied as part of the Peters Creek study that VDOT's administering, and that should be completed, the study, later this fall. Is that correct?
It'll be completed in the spring of next year.
Spring of next year.
So, this is in anticipation for that smart-scale application.
Sure, sure. That's being proactive, and that's good, but we have no idea what that's going to look like in terms of dollars at this time. Is that correct?
Oh, no. We're not there yet.
Well, I don't need to tell you that after hearing the news about the increased number of employees we're going to have in that corridor, that, you know, transportation improvements are going to be probably raised even higher in terms of improvement, because that intersection takes about two stoplights to get through there, especially at lunchtime and in the evening during rush hour.
Yes.
Maybe longer. I know, because I was there today. But anyway, that's been on a lot of people's minds, and I look forward to hearing more on that. Thank you.
Well, and that's the number-one implementation strategy in the Holland Center Plan. People said, "You've got to fix the Peters Creek/Williamson intersection." So, we're very grateful to VDOT for the project pipeline study, which is being done at no cost to Roanoke County, to study these intersections in this corridor to see what kinds of improvements make sense, what can we fund. So, we appreciate VDOT's help with this.
Madam Chair, there may be no further questions. I may move the motion, item D2.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the rule?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you. Item D3, resolution approving the execution of a performance agreement between the County of Roanoke, the Roanoke County Economic Development Authority, and Wells Fargo Bank N.A. to provide Wells Fargo Bank an economic development incentive grant for its business expansion activities in Roanoke County. Megan Baker, Director of Economic Development, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. What an exciting day for Roanoke County and the region. Earlier this afternoon, Wells Fargo announced an $87 million expansion and the creation of 1,100 more jobs in addition to the 1,650 already at their facility on Plantation Road. And so, just want to brief you on the Wells Fargo, the background, the project, and the performance agreement. Also, I'm joined by Peter if you have any specific questions on the agreement. So, a little bit of background, Wells Fargo is located at 7711 Plantation Road. It's about a half-million-square-foot building, some of which dates back to the early 1970s when it was built by Dominion Bank, which became First Union, Wachovia, and now today is Wells Fargo. The existing employment there, as I mentioned, is around 1,650 employees. Wells Fargo is currently the largest private employer in the county, and that site on Plantation Road is the largest single-location employment site in the county. And then, speaking more broadly, the Plantation Road corridor is the largest center of employment activity in the county. Other major employers include Elbit Systems and Double Envelope. So, very important, not just to our county but the region as an employment center. Here's a map of the Wells Fargo location off of IED 1 and Plantation Road. So, just want to discuss, as I mentioned, that Plantation Road corridor really is that center of employment, and so because of that, Roanoke County, I applaud you for really doing intentional planning around that corridor. Three major projects I want to highlight, two Phase One and Phase Two of Plantation Road Transportation Investments, but then the one that really directly, I think, has made a difference for Elbit, for Wells Fargo, is the Lila Drive Project. The county acquired the land for the road, brought it into the VDOT highway system, invested in the intersection, added a stoplight to really facilitate employment around those employers, adding safety. So, just, you know, I think some of those things that we started planning in 2008, started implementing in 2013, are why we're here today, really doing things for our employers and employees. And also want to note the pedestrian improvements that have also been made. Again, we have a lot of employees, we have a park, they want to get out, and so just really creating that climate for a good place to work and do business. So, now to the project. $87 million investment, $50 million to reconfigure, modernize the building, $37 million investment in business personal property, mostly IT equipment, 1,100 net new jobs to be created, bringing the total employment to 2,750, and average minimum wage of $52,000. So, these are good quality jobs. Construction of the facility is slated to start by December 1. We think it started earlier. We've heard it's, you know, we think it's going to start earlier. Slated completion date of December 31, 2025. With the completion of this project, Wells Fargo will surpass Roanoke County Public Schools as the largest employer in the county. Really remarkable. So, now the performance agreement terms. There will be abatement of net new real estate and business personal property tax over the course of 84 months. That has an estimated value of $5,375,000. This abatement is not capped, one, because this is an estimate, and then, two, if the investment's higher, we would welcome that. The agreement requires the creation of at least 1,000 jobs, which may be phased in over four years. The county will work with the Commonwealth on employment data to ensure the job creation numbers, and the jobs must be maintained over the life of the incentive period or abatement is reduced proportionally. Additional terms, if the company meets its investment of $87 million and its employment and has not reached that $5 million abatement, the term of the incentive period can be extended by 36 months until that $5 million figure is reached. The company may start that 84-month incentive period at their discretion, but no later than the calendar year following certificate of occupancy. They just have to notify the county what year they're picking to start the incentive period. And the agreement ends if the project is not complete by December 31, 2027, or if the company discontinues operations at the site. So, approvals, we'll be approving the resolution today. I will present the resolution to the Economic Development Authority Board at our October 5 meeting. They have been briefed. They are very excited about the project. And I just want to pause. Before taking questions, I want to say it is my privilege to present this project to you all today, but it really, it's a team effort. Economic development, I always say, is a team sport. I want to recognize county administration, the county attorney's office for their work on the performance agreement, my economic development staff, Carly Foster, our specialist is here today, John Hall, Executive Director of the Roanoke Regional Partnership, who is here today, he'll be briefing you later, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership led by Jason Alcubie. They were very instrumental in making sure this project came to the Commonwealth, came to Roanoke County. And last but not least, Megan Cronice, who's led the planning and implementation of the Plantation Road Transportation Projects over the last 10 years. The funding and the completion of the projects I highlighted during the presentation would not have happened without her leadership and would not have set the table for the great business and employment environment we have there today. I also want to compliment the Board for their foresight and wisdom to make investments in these infrastructure improvements. Also, thank you Supervisor North, Supervisor Radford, for representing Roanoke County on the Regional Transportation Planning Organization. And I can't emphasize enough, investments in infrastructure projects like those on Plantation Road really help to build that business climate. It helps to know companies can come in, it's ease of operating, and it's safe for their employees to come and go from work. And then, like I said, I don't know if this would have come to fruition, but I know that the company, the state, have just really highlighted all the work that Roanoke County has done in this corridor. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much for all your work. I think that you are very kind, and it tells a lot about you that you defer the success here, but we really appreciate your work, Megan. You've done a great job. I know that this is in Mr. North's district. Any comments?
Yeah, I just want to say it is a great day in Roanoke County, and it's one we should never forget. We got here because of the efforts of those people you recognize, but we sowed the seeds of investment in transportation infrastructure, and it reaps benefits. But I also want to say to you and to the administration that the Economic Development Department, while one of the smallest departments in the whole county, it's that way in many areas. Where I came from, transportation, it was the smallest department, but yet it is the most important in terms of business attraction. As a matter of fact, proactive economic development is one I ran on years ago, and Mr. Peters and I constantly talk about it over and over and over about we need to be proactive. And I knew that when your staff started this past spring going out and seeing customers and talking to them, whether you took cookies or other items to have an icebreaker and a conversation, I knew that things were going to pay off, and this is only just the beginning, but, you know, this is a big one. And so, I just want to recognize you and your staff. I know you're not going to stop here because it's not in your nature, and it's not in Roanoke County's nature. We want to be proactive, and we're open for business, and I'm so excited for this, even if it is in my district, even if it wasn't. I mean, this is huge, the largest investment made by anybody in Roanoke County and one of the largest employment numbers on a project. It's a great day for the whole county and the region. Thank you very much for your leadership.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, Martha, thank you very much. And Mr. North is right. The seeds that were sown, I think back in the day, Jason, Martha, and I are on the Planning Commission. We started working on the Plantation Road improvements with Megan. Remember that? That was a while ago. So, all those things just build up over time, and, you know, we're getting rewarded with that because we have that infrastructure. Megan, great job. John, do you mind standing up? We just can't quite see you back there, John Hall. Is he there?
I don't think he...
He left.
I guess he left.
Okay.
I guess he's done discussing the project.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, you know, hand congratulations.
I think he's in the building, but he didn't know he was going to have his baby in the sun here.
Okay, very good. Anyway, thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Any comment?
Well, as Mr. North said, it is a great day in Roanoke County. I do thank you and your staff, but, you know, more importantly, you know, as David touched on, and I was thinking about earlier, Philip Thompson was trying to wrangle all the three of us as planning commissioners back in the day, trying to explain to us why this was important, and it's nice to see these projects actually come to fruition and to see the benefit of why we did those, made those investments and made those recommendations, not only as a planning commissioner but now as a board member. But, you know, I want to thank the Governor's Office. We know that this would not have taken place without the Governor and the incentives that were placed by the Governor. And again, as you've mentioned, our administration, you, our county attorney, who thankfully keeps us out of jail, but we're thankful for so many people that have brought this to us and have allowed it to, you know, we can't forget Wells Fargo. I mean, they're the ones that wanted to make that investment here, and we're glad to have them, and I love to see the expansion, so thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
Couple things. There's always this chase to try to find the business that's out of town to come and locate here, and I think it's critically important that we send a message that we also want to support our existing businesses and hope and wish and are willing to work with them to expand their existing businesses. They are just as important as trying to chase some other company that's in Idaho or Iowa or California or whatever. The second thing is, yes, this is a great day for celebrating, but I think we all remember staff had been working on this for six months?
Yeah.
Longer?
Early summer.
And you were briefing us in close, in executive session and closed session, and it's been a long, it's been a long haul, but it has come together and fruition. And then, as everyone else has said, you go back a decade when Roanoke County started the Plantation Road improvements, and there was criticism and pushback on that. And I want to emphasize that that's one of the things that local government can do, public infrastructure, whether it's roads, water and sewer, broadband, those are the kinds of activities that local government does best, and it provides a foundation for existing businesses to expand or new businesses to come here. So, thank you, staff. Everybody did a great job, and sometimes it's hard to stay on course because it has been a long, a long haul for the Plantation Road projects. But I think you see the benefits that flow from that. Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
I just want to make another quick comment. I think that Mr. Mahoney brings up a very good point, that we have worked on a number of things throughout the years to prove that we're business-ready, that we wanted to make those investments, that whether it's transportation or whether it's we did the community plans or whatever, you know, we've worked on all this for a long time, and I mean, I really want to thank the community too, because the community came to those meetings, and they told us what they were looking for. They told us, you know, areas that they wanted to see improved, and that helps give us direction. It helps us set the course. So, you know, I think that, I appreciate everybody who's come out throughout the years, whether it be the Plantation Road project or the community meetings that we've had for the strategic planning, so anyway.
I appreciate it.
Martha?
Yes, sir.
One other comment. Sorry about that.
Okay.
You know, I want to thank Wells Fargo for selecting us. I mean, like Mr. Mahoney said, we want to go after those existing businesses, and so they, we're just so proud they're part of our community, and that they're going to expand and continue to grow, so we're just so thankful they chose us. The alternative could have been worse.
Absolutely. So, I just want to say one quick thing, and I think we're all just reveling in this celebration time and feel so good about this good win, but it has been years in the making. Mr. Mahoney spent time on the Planning Commission too, and really just a shout out to the Planning Department, Mr. Thompson, because it has been a lot of years of planning and foresight in trying to decide where these business corridors should take place and how to invest in them appropriately, and so it's good to have this. And I would just like to encourage the economic development team that, you know, kudos to you for reaching out to these companies. Buy more cookies. Let's do more of that and go and keep that communication line open. You know, how can we better serve our business community, and we want to work with them, so...
I think they call it long-range planning.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Do you want to make a motion?
Just a comment.
Just a comment that you're selling Roanoke County. Keeping your current business franchise and then growing it is as important as getting someone new to come in here. To work on this did just that, because it could have been, we were losing the jobs that were here, which were more than what, you know, we would ever imagined. And that would have been devastating to that area. So, great team effort. And, you know, transportation begets economic development. I've said it before. And with that, Madam Chair, I want to motion that Item D3, that we adopt the resolution.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Item E, First Reading of Ordinances. Ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of cable television franchise agreement by and between the County of Roanoke and Shenandoah Cable Television LLC. Mr. Peter Louvek, County Attorney.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Before you today is a cable franchise agreement with Shenandoah Cable Television LLC that most of us know as Chantel Communications. And as Chantel has begun to offer internet services to county residents, we have been asked many times by many of our dear residents whether they could also receive cable television services from Chantel. I have fielded many telephone calls. I know that you have. Our answer has been yes. But pursuant to federal law, we must first enter into a franchise agreement with Chantel. And this is pursuant to Title VII, or Title VI, excuse me, of the Federal Communications Act of 1934, which states that cable television operators must have a cable franchise agreement with a locality before doing business in the locality. And there are several benefits of having such cable franchise agreements. I will highlight just a few of them today. The agreement is quite lengthy, but just to highlight a few. First, there is franchise oversight and enforcement. This ensures that the cable service providers are adhering to the requirements that are identified in the franchise agreement and are in alignment with the applicable laws. Further, there are very clear customer service standards. The franchise agreement requires the cable provider to provide, to, to follow a set of standards that are designed to support customer needs and be accessible to customers. Additionally, as a benefit to the locality, cable services are offered at no charge at each county fire station, public school, police station, public library, and any other county facilities used for public purposes. The county, for many years, has had such a similar agreement with similar provisions with Cox Communications for their cable services. Today, for this agreement, this is a first reading. We recommend that this matter be set for a second reading and a public hearing on October 28 of 2023. And of course, I welcome any questions you might have.
Any questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Radford?
So, the, the county citizens will have two choices, Cox or Chantel?
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay. And right now, we don't have all that, Chantel doesn't have that backbone, I guess, in place.
That's correct.
And so they'll go about installing that?
Yes, sir. And as you may have seen in the agreement, which has been attached in your board packet, Exhibit B sets forth a distribution area with different circles that show the area where they intend to put the cable.
Yeah, I saw that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Peters?
I just want clarification. So, is Globe Fiber subsidiary of Chantel?
It is. And so they're, they're offering internet services through Globe Fiber. And there are not the same restrictions placed on internet. And I think that there's a couple of reasons for that. First and foremost is that there is a real push to expand internet connectivity very quickly. And so there is not the same federal requirement to have these franchise agreements for just the internet services.
But they, they should be, if, if it's part of Globe Fiber, and they've already taken care of that part. So it would be my understanding that they can now come back to those customers and offer that cable service?
Yes, sir.
I've had a lot of people ask that in my area.
With the same infrastructure that they put in there?
Yes, I was, I was going to say, Mr. Peters. I think that wherever they have the Globe, you know, the fiber run, it'll run over the same fiber. So it's not, well, we call it cable. It's just going to be, you know, sort of carried over that fiber connection.
That's correct. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Louvek, how would this, how would Shenandoah interact with RV TV? Could you talk about that a little bit?
I'd be happy to look more into that and provide a more detailed explanation during the second reading. But I assume that they would, of course, cooperate with RV TV in providing services that are needed to support them.
Like, right now, we have through Cox, if you have a Cox agreement, you go to Channel 3 and you can watch our meetings. And I kind of wonder how, how Shenandoah or Chantel or Globe Fiber will handle that. So if you could look at that for the second reading?
Of course, I'd be happy to.
And then a second que- to piggyback on that, it is my understanding that in the past, that Cox has also helped financially support RV TV. So I don't know if any of that was in this as well. I didn't see it, but.
Didn't see it either.
Yeah.
No, sir. At this point in time, it simply, there are the, the tax provisions, that they would remit taxes to the Commonwealth, which would in turn be distributed to the locality. There's also a provision that provides that if the board at a future date decides by either resolution or by ordinance to impose an additional fee of up to 20 cents per customer per quarter. So on a quarterly basis, the board could do that, to impose such a fee on Chantel. At this point in time, I, I do not believe that that provision is in place for Cox, but it's certainly something that could be explored for these, these providers.
I think the question I'm trying to, that I'm trying to get an answer to is, in the past, as we've done the agreements with, with Cox, has there not been a financial, I don't want to say obligation, but a...
Contribution?
Contribution to RV TV in these, because I'm, I'm sitting on that board.
I understand.
That's my understanding, where the money that they keep in reserve, that we do a lot of the improvements and upgrade our cameras, that was money that was given, contributed to RV TV through these agreements with Cox.
I appreciate the clarification. I, again, would be happy to look into that for the next, next reading.
Any other questions for staff?
Just to be clear, Madam Chair, yes. So Globe Fiber came into county, and they put their fiber underground, and they're going to be able to run the cable through that same fiber without doing any more excavation. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
That's right.
We hope so.
Well, something's going on because, and I'm not saying, I don't know who it is, so I'm not saying it's Chantel or Cox or Water Authority, whoever. But I'm seeing a lot of marks. It looks like they're pretty fresh here lately, walking around my neighborhood, because I've been doing a little walking, and so has Jason. And I don't know what's coming, but something's coming, and it's been mighty quiet. So I'm sure that the citizens will let us know.
I'm sure they will.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading and public hearing for October 10, 2023?
Madam Chair, I would move the approval of the ordinance at Item E1 that would authorize and approve the execution of a cable television franchise agreement with Shenandoah Cable Television, and to have a second reading and public hearing on October 10.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. And so Item F, Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolution. F1 is Resolution Requesting the Commonwealth Transportation Board Fund a Transportation Alternatives Program project in fiscal years 2025 and 2026 for the Glade Creek Greenway in Vineyard Park East in the Vinton Magisterial District. Ms. Megan Cronice, Assistant Director of Planning, welcome again.
Thank you. The Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, provides 80% federal funding for a 20% local match to fund community-based projects that expand non-motorized travel choices and enhance the transportation experience by improving the cultural, historical, and environmental aspects of the transportation infrastructure. The program focuses on providing pedestrian and bicycle facilities, community improvements, and mitigating the negative impacts of the highway system, while also strengthening the local economy, improving quality of life, and protecting the environment. The Virginia Department of Transportation administers the program. For the TAP application to be eligible for submission, the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors must hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution supporting the project. The application is due October 2. Glade Creek Greenway is identified in the 2018 Roanoke Valley Greenway Plan, which was adopted by the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors in September 2018. The town of Vinton has constructed two segments of the greenway. A third segment is nearing construction, and a fourth segment, Phase 3, is funded for design. Roanoke County obtained funding in 2022 for Phase 4 through Vineyard Park West, which is currently design, in design and nearing 90% plans. The proposed half-mile asphalt Glade Creek Greenway segment in Vineyard Park East will continue to extend the greenway east towards residential neighborhoods in the city of Roanoke and Roanoke County. These neighborhood connections will enable residents to walk from their homes along the Glade Creek Greenway to Tinker Creek Greenway and to the Roanoke River Greenway. Roanoke County Planning, Development Services, and Parks, Recreation, and Tourism have collaborated with City of Roanoke and VDOT staff to determine the location and features of a Berkeley Road at Great Crosswalk and the general location of the greenway along Glade Creek. Roanoke County anticipates administering the proposed project. Because the proposed greenway is located entirely within county-owned property, with the exception of the Berkeley Road crosswalk on City Rite of Way, no rite of way will be needed from private property owners. The total estimated cost of the Glade Creek Greenway through Vineyard Park West is approximately $1 million. A capital improvement program project will be submitted for fiscal year 2025 to 2033 for the required 20% match funding, which will not exceed $200,000. Staff recommends approving the resolution of support for the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program application for fiscal years 2025 and 2026 for the Glade Creek Greenway in Vineyard Park East. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
So are there any questions of Ms. Cronice before we go to our public hearing? Any questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
Ms. Cronice, as I look at the project sketch, they show a future project, proposed bridge. Not so much a question, but just let everybody know that this is just the first shoe to drop, and there's going to be a second shoe that's going to be paying for a bridge. Any guess estimate of what a bridge costs these days?
If we look at some of this other greenway...
This is actually the second shoe, and the bridge would be the third shoe.
Oh, the third shoe.
Because Vineyard Park West is nearing construction advertisement in the next six months. So we should have a greenway on the ground in Vineyard Park West in the near future. So we intentionally left the bridge out of this project because bridges are expensive. We have already obtained prices from consulting firms that state that a study to look at what a, a bridge would cost, and in this case, it needs to be a low-water bridge, because a bridge out of the floodway would need to cross the railroad tracks to get out of the floodway. So can, a study to look at a low-water bridge would be about $30,000 to $40,000 to start. That's just a study. So to construct a bridge, I'm sure it will be much more expensive than that. Because we don't have those figures at this time, the Transportation Alternatives application, which is limited in funding, we've tried to get as much out of it as we can with the funding we think the Commonwealth Transportation Board will allow to get us another half mile up the creek. We're also getting very close to the city of Roanoke, which is just on the other side of the Vineyard Park East line. So we're also coordinating with them. So we know we need to build a bridge, and then we need to figure out where the greenway goes from there, which will involve private property owners. So it's one more step as we move towards the Bon Sac area and the Route 460 land use and connectivity study, where we talked about greenways a lot along the creek. So we can continue to extend that infrastructure.
So again, public infrastructure. I mean, it, it worked great for transportation and plantation road.
And 419, and Taylor Wood.
So just, I know this is hard, but, but again, it's part of, it's part of what we do. And this is the kind of infrastructure that I think makes this a great place to live. A great place to raise a family.
Agreed. If there's no other comment at this point, I'll go ahead and open this up for the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing. Are there any further questions or comments before I request a motion? Mr. Peters, would you like to make a motion?
Absolutely. I'm going to make a motion to approve, approve Item F1.
And there's a second? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you. Item G, Public Hearing. G1, Public Hearing to Receive Citizen Comments Regarding Proposed Amendments to the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget in accordance with Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2507. Mr. Steve Elliott, Budget Administrator, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is a public hearing to secure citizens' comments concerning amendment in the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget by adjusting the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the fiscal year by $3,777,457 from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development in response to the 2022 award of funds from Virginia Telecommunications Initiative Grant and appropriating such funds to the county's grant fund for subsequent distribution to the Roanoke County Economic Development Authority to provide economic development incentive grants to internet service providers. As you said, Section 15.2-2507 of the Code of Virginia, as amended, provides that whenever such amendment exceeds 1% of the total expenditure shown in the adopted budget, the county must publish notice of a meeting and public hearing. The notice must state the county's intent to amend the budget and include a brief synopsis of the proposed budget amendments. This notice was published on September 19, 2023. It is recommended that the board hold the required public hearing. Board action appropriating funds as provided in this notice will occur later during this meeting. Conducting the public hearing does not guarantee the requested appropriation will be approved.
So with that being said, this also requires a public hearing, Madam Clerk? Has there been anyone to sign up for this?
No, ma'am.
Public hearing? So we will open the public hearing and then close the public hearing. Are there any further questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain. There is no motion. This was just a public hearing. So Item H, Appointments. Ask if the board has any appointments that has not yet been given the clerk. Anybody, any appointments at this time?
I'm working on some.
Thank you. I know that we have a couple of districts that have several vacancies that need to be filled. And we may need to have a, a work session on that, just to help brainstorm for ideas, especially if we should lose a board member.
Madam Chair, I think some of the members are still serving on those committees, so.
We're not pointing anybody out. Yeah, we do, but there, we have quite a few vacancies that, that I would like to see filled as soon as we can.
Yeah, like before the end of the year.
Yes, exactly. So Item I is Consent Agenda. Is there any board member that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item J is Citizen Comments and Communications. Madam Clerk, have we received any sign-ups for speakers?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Item K, is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
Make a motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item L is Work Session. L1 is a work session to review with the Board of Supervisors the preliminary and unaudited financial results for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, for the County of Roanoke, Virginia. Mr. Steve Elliott will be leading that, along with Lori Gerhart, Director of Finance and Management Services. After that, we will go into a closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia. I move to go into a closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711.A.5, Discussion Concerning the Expansion of Existing Businesses Where No Previous Announcement Has Been Made of the Business's Interest in Locating or Expanding Their Facilities in Roanoke County. Specifically, such locations or expansions are proposed to occur in the Catawba, Cave Spring, and Hollands Magisterial Districts. Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. So we will now recess to the Third Floor for a work session and closed session, and we'll return for our 7:00 PM for the evening session.